I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, united, proud, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Volkroll. President Destefana. President. Ellen Donahue. President. Freedman. Here. Carriga. Here. Haddad. Here. Keith. Here. Mia. Here. Moore. Here. O'Hara. Here. Rector. Present. And Scolera. Here. For President. Motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 1st and June 21st meetings, and place them on file. May I have a motion, please? Tiffany. Henry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of June 30th, 2016, and place it on file. May I have a motion? Mike. Lauren. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Committee reports. May I have a motion and a second? Place the committee reports on file. So, Mike. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Communications. Communication from Tracey Delaney, City Clerk, certifying the petition titled, "Petition for City of Hudson Charter Amendment to Revise the Boundaries of the Wards in the City of Hudson and Voting Procedure for its Common Council," compiled with all the requirements of law. May I have a motion and a second to receive this communication and place it on file? Rick. Stella. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Appointing Commissioners of Deeds. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Commissioner of Deeds. Aye. Freedman.
Sure. Yes.
Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Carry. We have a revised resolution tonight authorizing the application to the New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. We have an introduction and a second. Mike. Alexis. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Aye. Carry. Authorizing. Sorry. Authorizing application to the Community Development Block Program Program for renovations. May I have a second? I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Authorizing application to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Starred Preservation Environmental Protection Fund Grants Program for Parks Preservation and Heritage Grant Programs. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Aye. Carry. Authorizing application to the Community Development Block Program Program for renovations and improvements to the youth center. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Carry. Approving an agreement with the Columbia County Office of the Aging to provide one part-time staff person to provide a meals and nutrition program at the Hudson Senior Center. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Carry. Retaining the Lane Gold Esquire as negotiator for the Hudson Police Department Union Labor Contract. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Carry. Authorizing the transfer of funds to pay a legal claim settlement to Heinrich Von Ritter. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Mike. Henry. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman.
Before I voted this, I just want to say this $50,000 is... We're spending this $50,000 because we have a problem in the Department of Public Works. And this was an unvetted project that went forward. And we caused this lawsuit. Now it's cost us another $50,000 plus what we're going to have to spend for remedies. This is the tip of the iceberg here. I hope somebody in the executive branch is listening to my vote. Aye.
Carriga. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Mia.
I hope. This is the first time, last time for me. I don't know. In this, if it will be won, lawsuit. Anyhow. Aye.
Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Aye. Carry. Amending the budget to provide funds for municipal insurance. May I have an introduction and a second? Stella. Henry. Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Aye. Carry. Establishing escrow for costs incurred in reviewing collarers of Hall Road applications. May I have an introduction and a second? Mike. Henry.
What are we voting here, I see? What are we doing?
This is number nine.
Thank you.
The application that came this recently came before the planning board. Yes, please. The city asked collarers to put money in escrow to pay for, you know, expert fees. Legal, engineering. It's very common practice, and you know, big practice, a big project, it's just basically they're putting in $10,000 escrow. So that the applicant can prepare the costs. And that's there to view.
You're self-escrowing?
No, they're going to deliver a check to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote. President Destefana. Aye. Ellen Donahue. Aye. Freedman. Aye. Carriga. Aye. Haddad. Aye. Keith. Aye. Mia. Aye. Moore. Aye. O'Hara. Aye. Rector. Aye. And Scolera. Aye. Carry. Before we move on to the last resolution for tonight, we have Joe Ratt with us, and we're going to discuss the police department project and the change orders that have come through from the start of construction till now. And if any of you on the council have any questions, this is the perfect time to ask. So, Mr. Ratt, would you like to?
Do you have a question?
Excuse me?
Did you get it?
Excuse me?
Do you have any, like, detail on how much money?
The paper's right on your desk. It's right by your right hand.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ratt, would you like to talk to us about the change orders that have come through? And I guess most specifically, one of the things that we're going to be voting on tonight is the roof. So, and that is one of the good ones. So, I guess that's one that we're going to be most interested in by that hearing.
Would you like to ask questions or hear the history of the roof?
Well, yes.
I'd like to ask questions. This is not the first time the word "roof" has been used in this chamber in connection with this project. The question of the quality and the state of this roof was asked at least twice in the last council before this project was approved. We were assured both times that the roof was in okay condition. And now we're being asked to spend, make it really clear to you, $49,000 to furnish and install new 26-gate, whatever that is, roof. On a roof that we were assured, not once but twice, was in fine condition. What's changed? And so who lied to us?
Well, I don't think anybody lied, 21. The change order was an unsolicited change order from the general constructor. Neither myself, nor the city, nor DPW requested a change order. We received a change order and we passed it on with no recommendation. The roof didn't leak when the building was purchased. It didn't leak, to my knowledge, for the year that we owned it, before work started or whatever that timeframe was, nor does it leak now. The contractor is responsible for the roof not leaking since the contractor is the only one that did work to the roof since the project started. It's possibly the contractor's motivation to have the roof repaired under another warranty to relieve himself of the initial warranty of his work and the roof not leaking. If the roof were to leak in six months from now, it would not be an easy determination as to why or where it was leaking. And that's a technical issue, but you can take my word for it, it would be hard to tell where it's leaking.
Why was he, why were the contractors on the roof now? I mean, you said they were doing work on the roof. What were they doing on the roof?
Well, the roof was being penetrated by 50 or 60 penetrations. So, all of those penetrations had to be sealed and not leaked. That's the contractor's responsibility. So, we passed on the change orders. The initial one, which was a rubberized roof coating. I requested a second change order proposal for a patch and repair for any areas that seemed questionable visually. Since it's not leaking, you can't go and patch the leaks. It's not leaking. The DPW and myself also requested a third change order, which would be for your review or discussion, as we're talking about now, which would be a brand-new roof. The roof was put on in the '70s. As I said, it's not leaking now. Is it going to leak in a year from now? I don't know. It's old enough that it should, it could be replaced. So, questions?
Question is, you are the project manager, right?
Instruction man, yes.
Yeah? So, how old is it, it was a roof?
Built in the '70s, the original roof.
Okay.
It was, work was done to it at one time.
It is, it is tragedy. You are, you are project manager. You did not realize that you make a new building, it don't have a roof and no leaking. I, I'm the order man, simple. I had no idea about the building. Two months ago, I told you, you need a new roof. It'll be leaking very soon. So, how you think you've expertise? Could be worse than me?
What's the question?
Two months ago, I said, it will be new roof. You need it. Two months, two and or three months ago. So, you, you judgment. You are the project manager, you judgment. You should realize that you need a new roof or not from the beginning, part of this thing. Now, general, as a general public and general man, I understand this 40, 50, 60 years roof, you make a new building, you have to have a new roof or not leaking. So, you did not realize right now that you leaking. I was asking two months ago this council that you have to have to put in a new roof because it's a roof, you'll be, will be no good. So, you determine, what do you think?
I'm not recommending that you put a new roof on. The design firm that was hired to design the building, the renovation and restoration of that building, did not design a new roof. I'm in agreement with that.
So, I'm respecting. Are you project manager? Project manager should be looking at all of those things. What is it, what is it coming? That's what you hire for. You hire for the whole project.
No. It's not my scope of work to inspect the building and tell you that it leaks or it doesn't leak. It's really not in my scope of work. My scope of work is to manage the construction process based on the design.
What is it managing?
Let me finish. The design provided by the hired architect. That's what we're doing. It's not in anyone's scope of work. It is not leaking. I have not said that you should put a roof on. Can you do something better? Certainly, you can do something better. Our job has been from day one to balance quality, cost, and time. We, no one felt, but it's not my job to determine it during the design phase, that it needed a new roof. I did not buy the building. I did not inspect the building. I'm not hired to certify that roof or inspect that roof. I can tell you from being on the site every day, the roof does not leak. Will it leak? Yes, it's going to leak sometime. It's an old roof. Should you repair it or should you replace it? That's your decision. If you replace it now, it's probably a simpler process. I would not fix it. I would not patch it. I would not put rubber on it because the three proposals we have, one for $7,500 to do some specialized repair, a $42,000 proposal to rubberize the roof, and then a $47,000 to put a brand-new roof on that could probably last 40 years. If I spent any money on it, I would replace the roof because you will replace the roof someday, like you will on every other building that you own. But does it need to be replaced today? And is it leaking today? The answer is no, to the best of my knowledge. And I'm there every day.
Rick.
Joe, with all due respect, none of us on this council are experts in construction. And we rely, and we must rely heavily on the people that we've selected and are paying to be our construction manager. And additionally, the DPW is the acting clerk of the works for this. I can't live in a vague world where I'm told that the roof was fine a year ago, and now we're looking at, well, this construction person who you're working with says we need a new roof. I don't think we need a new roof. DPW doesn't think we need a roof, but it might be a good idea to get that new roof. What are you telling us to do?
Give us $50,000.
I'm not telling you to do anything. I'm giving you my analysis of it so you can become informed and make an intelligent decision about it. Should you put a new roof on? If money was not the issue, I would sit here today and tell you, yes, you should put a new roof on.
Should we have done that a year ago? Put that in the budget?
Well, it was leaking a year ago. I mean, there's a lot of parts of that building that you couldn't make the same argument about. You would have knocked it down.
Are those going to come up next?
No.
I mean, I really don't know what's... I, I, I believe in you. I trust you. You know, if we need a new roof, just tell us.
You have approximately 20 change orders. Most of them are, are under several thousand dollars so far. Most of them have to do with the existing conditions of the building. Was that unexpected? Absolutely not. Certainly was expected.
Joe, you said this building was constructed in the '70s?
That's what I believe, yeah.
And so somewhere between the '70s and now, there was patching done? Or what sort of roofing project was done on?
Well, the building was renovated several times, the last being the finish line. It was a substantial renovation of the whole building. At some point, I think, at that time or prior to that, all of the seams on the roof were treated with a coating. That's obvious.
So, that would, that would be considered a patch?
No, that would be considered a way to extend the life of this metal roof. The metal roof itself is not failing, the metal itself, the seams where the metal go together. Maybe this was done in a precautionary way, but when the building was emptied by Finish Line, and I walked through it, there was no indication of leaking, the architect said the same thing. He said the building was not leaking when he inspected it. But he wasn't hired to inspect it and/or certify the roof. Those are two different things. This is observation through the design process. What does the building need? What do we need to do with to make it a police station and a courthouse?
And this, I'm sorry, John. Can I ask one more question? The seam, the seam job that they did sometime between the '70s and now would not, would not be considered new roof?
No. The existing metal roof that was built on the building, to the best of my knowledge, is the same roof that is there. There's no indication.
Only patched seams?
Well, it's a system. I mean, and for $42,000, you could do that too. All the seams are sealed, and then the entire roof is coated with a rubberized product. It's a commercial application. It's done all the time, the roofs of that nature.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I guess from listening to you, Joe, and reading this resolution rather carefully, or as carefully as I can here in a few minutes, we don't need a new roof. This is like, boy, if I really could do what I wanted to do, I'd put a new roof on this now. And I'm not saying that's your attitude.
I know you're not saying that.
I know you're not saying it, but that sounds like less.
But I can't say that's not my job. I'm trying to give you the analysis. I can't make a decision. I can make a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need a new roof. We need a new roof, put on a new roof. But I have to say that I am worried about some of these other numbers on this report. Garage access and additional $15,200? And then...
Well, I didn't go, I didn't talk about...
I would like it to, but I'd also like to know about this purchase generator for $37,500.
Okay. The project was in the design phase for a year and a half. The project was value engineered. The project had items that you may expect and may still expect you're getting with this project that don't exist. There are some items that were removed from the project during the value engineering phase. For example, there's no site work and/or civil work by the design firm for any of the exterior of the property. Parking lots, exterior lighting, other than lighting that's on the building, paving, striping, sidewalks, none of that is in this project. Generator was value engineered in the original design and the original bid process and the subsequent cost analysis that the city paid for by a, an estimating, a separate estimating company in the city. The generator was somewhere $65,000 as a cost, base cost in the project. It was value engineered out through discussion with the folks that were involved in the project. Maybe we can call them a committee. There was a discussion that the existing generator at the police department could be used to provide backup power for a partial police department. That could still happen. No one thinks it's a great idea. The electrical contractors did not think that, nor does the architect, nor does DPW. It would work and it would run the basic communications of the police department. The rest of the building would not work during a power outage. We have a proposal, so $65,000 in the contract documents being through the bid process. We can lease one for $32,000. We can buy one now for $37,000 that will run the entire building. So, we have three proposals on the table. We have a change order from the electrical contractor for $37,000 to deliver a 100K generator that will run the entire building. OCA doesn't care. If the power goes out, they're all going to go home. They don't need it, but this would run the whole building. I also have two other proposals, $32,000 and some change. One, they're both leased to buy. One is a yearly payment and one is a monthly payment. So, by taking out of the bid phase, we basically can buy a generator for $37,000 or $32,000. It's a substantial savings. Or you can use the one that's at the police department. This has been a question on the table from day one, and it's a, it's a buck that everyone keeps passing. I can't make the decision. It's, it's the owner's responsibility to make this decision, and the City of Hudson is the owner, so...
So, City of...
We're at the point now where we have numbers and we have several proposals on how to deal with the issue.
Okay. All right, you go ahead.
My question is, so you left the generator, the original budget, right? And now you feeling that we need a generator, right?
Well, I think, police department wants a generator when power goes out. Then we can talk on the radio.
You tell you to not include it from the beginning.
Who? I would say it was months of discussion about it.
The city making a decision not to include it?
I don't think anyone is here that was in those discussions, anyone.
That's not true.
Well, I'm probably here.
The three of us.
Yes, I was there. I don't know. Did anyone just comment?
Comment on the generator? Me or... No, I thought you had your hand up. All right, so I wanted to discuss several things involving all the change orders. There were discussions back in the day, back in the day, at the end of last year. And when the VE change, the value engineering changes were placed in, there were many discussions about the fact that one of the things was removed, was the generator. We were told at the time that the police department preferred the concept of leasing a generator because they did not have the wherewithal or ability to maintain the generator. You know, you have to check it, you have to, you have to do all sorts of things to it. They did not want to have that responsibility. That cost was taken out of the construction estimate with the assumption that there would be an annual increase in the police or other budget to accommodate that. When Rob Perry came on board as the clerk of the works, he observed the fact that if we rent it, there's going to be an ongoing expense every year to lease the generator. And his concept was we have other generators across the city. DPW manages them. You might need a small service contract for the complex things, but for the day-to-day things, it's fine. And it basically removed the requirement of the police department per se to maintain their own generator because it would go into the building fund, and DPW would be responsible for it. Once he made that observation, we all agreed that if... Once he made that observation, we all agreed that if there was enough money left in the contingency, it would make much more sense to buy the generator. So we're not paying interest and we're not paying a lease fee. DPW can maintain the basic stuff, and we bring in, you know, a much lower contract level. You're not seeing the change order in front of you today though because in the grand scheme of things, our contingency is fixed. We're hitting against things. If closer toward the end of the project, if there's enough money left to buy the generator outright, I definitely think that would be the smartest thing to do. We're not paying interest, we're not paying the up charge, we're not doing those things. But right now, I think the reason you don't have a resolution in front of you is because at the end of the day, if there's not enough money left in contingency, we can still rent to own. We can still have five years of payments or sixty months of payments or whatever. So that's where that landed. So that's how that happened. Should it have been taken out? Probably not, but it was.
Well, it was taken out to save thirty thousand dollars. So the generator itself was thirty-two thousand dollars. So leaving it in the bid documents, you're paying quite a premium for a generator. Doing it this way seems a little confusing. So it was always understood that there would be some type of generator there, whether it's either one from the police department or one that we have documentation on now, which is a lease to own for thirty-two thousand.
Don?
Yeah, Don Moore. I would just add that I think that Heather... I agree with Heather, and of course Heather has newer information since Rob got involved in the project, vis-à-vis the generator. What I would offer to the council is that as far as an overview is concerned, have a sense of what the contingency budget is available in this. So that you track that, and each of these change orders that comes along, you can subtract, you can look at those change orders in context of that number. It won't change the overall expense of the project as long as you stay within the contingency, vis-à-vis any change orders.
What was the total of the contingency we have?
What was the total? Two hundred thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Right now, before tonight's vote, I believe it was roughly, it was thirty-five point four thousand dollars that's been committed of that. The change orders in hand total up to another one hundred and eighteen thousand. But two of them importantly are not up for vote right now. And that includes supporting nine thousand dollar roofs. So the two that we're not really discussing right now is the gravy wall. I don't know if that's come up for discussion yet, but it's basically twelve thousand dollars? Which is an aesthetic improvement that would be lovely if the money is there, but not important in terms of the architecture or the construction or the stability of the building. And the other one is the generator. And the thing about the generator is, my personal... Sorry, okay. My personal belief is that we should not be voting on the generator tonight, which is why you do not have a resolution. If, as we get closer to the end of the project and there's enough money left in the contingency, it makes all the sense in the world to buy the generator outright. We're not paying interest, we're not gonna pay fees on it. But I think that is a thing that if we don't have enough money in the contingency, we could in fact lease it over five years, sixty payments, or five payments annually on the roof. I know nobody asked me, but I'm gonna share my opinion anyway. I think it would not be smart to not replace the roof at this point in time. You are about... And I know I see Abdu smirking because Abdu's has been saying the roof needed to be replaced all the time. You are correct, yay. But at the end of the day, you are spending millions of dollars to build and outfit this building. We have enough money in the contingency to cover this. Once the building is populated with the police on one side, and more importantly, if the courts on the other side. Because we can do as clearly we know whatever we want with the police because they've been living in a substandard building for a long period of time. The courts do not have that luxury. It's an empty building, we have the opportunity to fix it. It's a one-time shot, it's a twenty-year guarantee. Once you patch it and you put the courts and the police in there, I don't know how you effectively and efficiently fix the roof after that point. I know part of the idea was if we wait, you don't have to pay prevailing wages. But I don't think that's an efficient enough argument to say that we should not be doing it now. So my personal opinion, for what it's worth, it's probably nothing, is I would recommend replacing the roof as part of this project.
First, Don, I give you respect, Heather, you and Don, but I don't wanna tell anything no more. But I'm telling you that one thing. The generator issue, that is you wrong. You backward. When you fix it everything, you look at the money, you have to go backward. You tell the who, save the money? I don't think so. You will be spending more money because you put it in a bag. That's labor, everything costs you back. So when you've done the whole project, we should do the whole everything. And how much money needed, that should be considered for the initial part, for the beginning. So we wanna see the show... I don't wanna say nobody down like that. We wanna show that, oh, we don't need the money. Now we need the money. That it will be practical thing. So if you wait for contingency fund, save it. If, I don't know, I have no idea, you know better than that. If contingency fund saved for the city, then oh, run away. We can put in a general fund two hundred that put in a bag. So, or something. Okay, I don't know, you know better than that, that's fine. But question is, we don't save the money. We put in a generator bag, we put in a labor, everything?
No. I'm sorry, but let me...
Oh, okay, okay. Maybe I asked you.
You can, let's say, the policing... So we've raised basically four point three million dollars in municipal bonds to fund this. Let's say it comes in at four million dollars and there's three hundred thousand dollars left over. That does not go to the general fund. That does not let you spend it on other things that have to do with general city business. That money is reserved for things having to do with that particular capital project. It's not a bad thing because if you have three hundred thousand dollars sitting there, and at this point, we're at a quarter of a million dollars a year on average debt service for this police and courts building. So that would let you cover one year of debt service, which would be awesome. Don't get me wrong, that'd be great. But that money is not allowed to be just taken and spent on whatever else you wanted to spend on. It is specific to that project.
How was your thinking about the money you brought in yearly?
The first, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, so I could be wrong, camera. I believe that the first debt service was three point nine percent interest, and I believe the second debt interest is, I'm gonna say, two point seven maybe? It might be less than that.
How much you spend again?
Well, the debt service payment is, it varies slightly from year to year because that's the way the debt structure is. It's structured so that you have a fairly even payment, which means you're, much like your mortgage, you pay more in interest and less in principal, and then it changes over time. Roughly, the debt service for the two municipal bonds combined is somewhere between two hundred and sixty and two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. For until nineteen thirty-four slash nineteen thirty... No, I'm sorry, two thousand and thirty-four slash two thousand and thirty-six. Because one bond ends earlier than the other.
Just quickly, Heather, again, the contingency is two hundred thousand dollars?
I'm sorry.
Two hundred thousand dollars we have?
Two hundred thousand five hundred.
Two hundred thousand five hundred.
Oh, your contingency was two hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
And currently we're looking at a hundred and fifty-four thousand all total, which is seventy-seven percent, and I agree, Don, we have to watch this vigilantly. But I would also agree with an expert standing here in our treasurer and looking at a potential building that would should last for the city if I didn't, for fifty, maybe a hundred years, like the roof has been there. Then we should go ahead and do this roof.
I think the way we all think, that's like on the last, you know? Out of all the things we have to do, that's the last thing we have to do. I think to not do a roof, it's like when you buy a house. You're gonna do all of this work.
I'm excited about this, but...
I know, I'm not either. Do I look happy? No. It makes sense, like, so.
Yes, I agree with Heather that this is a forty-plus-year-old roof. And given the opportunity that we have right now with an empty building to deal with the roof when it's relatively easier to do and when the exposure to woodwork and furniture down below is less, I think we ought to get it over with.
Just one quick comment on the generator. I'm a little confused about talking about buying a new generator while at the same time saying it's possible to use an existing generator at the police station. So I'm confused about that.
Am I understanding that the size of the generator that is at the police station would not serve the new facility?
Well, no one's determined what the purpose of the generator is. That has never been determined, nor required or documented. So the generator is a residential, small residential generator that ran the police department now. Would run it now if the power went off. That could be used. The size of this building and this type of equipment and sophistication of this building, it will only run a small portion of the building. Moving it, setting it up...
I think that's kind of what I asked. You have to say it differently.
Well, someone has to tell someone, the construction folks, the design team, and the construction manager, that we want, the owner, the City of Hudson wants a generator that will run this entire building. That statement has never happened, hasn't come from anyone. We don't have that direction. So I'm trying to answer a series of questions. Is it too small to run the building? Yes, it is. It's too small to run the building it's attached to now. The one that would run the building, if you want a generator to run the entire building, is thirty-two thousand dollars leased to own.
As per Heather's request that we not decide the generator tonight. Could we then have an answer before that? As you said, someone has to give me an answer.
A direction?
Yes, or a directive.
A directive. Get me a price for a generator to run this entire building. I've already done that, and that information is available, and I've just told you what it is. So...
Joe, it sounds like it's at least a twenty-eight thousand dollar savings or a twenty-three thousand dollar saving. That's still a relatively competitive price for a hundred K V generator.
Right.
Only because I used to price it. It's a very good price.
The strategy in the value engineering process was successful in that it saved a substantial amount of money.
And secondly, can you reiterate what you said at the beginning? Your recommendation, you don't think we need a new roof now? Is that what you said?
My recommendation?
Because I'm under the impression that if it's a metal roof in Hudson, you probably don't need to replace it, you need to maintain it. And earlier, we had spoken a month ago about, I think it was a forty-two thousand dollar change order that had been discussed at the committee regarding the rubberizing for the twenty-five-year extension rubberizing. And could you refresh my memory? But I believe you said that to extend another twenty-five was maybe twelve thousand upfront and then a few...
Right, all these numbers come from lots of conversation, negotiation, arguments on site with contractors and myself. It was the contractor that threw out a number of a hundred thousand dollars for a new roof to put off the subject, and he wanted to really go with a rubberized product. Obviously, the contractor on site is making money for the work that he does there. We questioned the number of a hundred thousand dollars. We came back with a brand-new roof, metal roof, like what's there now, for forty-seven thousand dollars. And I think that is your best value. To do it now or to do it later? There's a cost to do it now, there's a savings to do it later. Is there an inconvenience later? I don't know, if you had to put a roof on this building, would there be an inconvenience? There'd be a crane out in the street loading stuff on the roof? Any other building in the city owns would need a roof, there's an inconvenience? I don't know. If it's done immediately after the project closes and prior to the courts taking possession of their space, that's another strategy. I mean, we talk about all these things. We don't try to simplify it and get it in a couple of sentences and make it easy or comfortable for everyone to wrap their brain around. I mean, it's complicated. You can save some money if you really work hard at thinking about it. The easy answer is, to answer all your questions, yeah, you should put a roof on it now, brand-new roof, and you shouldn't spend the forty-seven thousand dollars. Apparently, we may have that in the budget. My job is to make sure we don't spend one penny that we don't need to spend. And we need to spend every penny we spend in a smart way, as smart as possible. Sorry for the long answer.
Based on, this is a very loaded answer. So you're feeling now with your years of experience on projects of this nature, maybe not this nature, but at least this magnitude, are you, how does your foresight see about our contingency fund? The last time we spoke, you were very optimistic about having something left over and not running over, regardless of what the something was, by your December first delivery date. Has anything changed, plus or minus?
Based on my survey of the contractors and what they see coming in the immediate future is the electrician, the plumber, and the mechanical contractor don't have any substantial changes, if any, that I'm aware of. The general constructor, J.C. Milbank, is the one who's generated most of the change orders. Other than possibly some flooring finish issues, we don't see any more change orders. But that doesn't mean we won't get one. We could reject it, we should renegotiate it. Does it look like we will be under the two hundred thousand, five hundred dollars? I would say at this point, yes.
And you're still considering the roof and the generator as proposed?
My proposal to lease it or to buy it?
Which is still a very reasonable price for that generator. But your timeframe, has that fluctuated at all in any way?
No, we're ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule, that's great.
Yeah. And we have not spent the entire contingency yet, so I think...
I was lucky enough to go on a tour of the new facility, and the interior is dramatically different than what you see on the exterior at this point. And I would suggest that every member of this body, if you have the chance, make the time, along with Joe or DPW or the mayor, I guess could help set it up to take advantage of looking and seeing what our money's spending. Because it is, again, what you see on the outside is not what you see on the inside. And that's all changed. So I'm very positive about it so far.
I agree. I took tour recently and, yeah. Henry, and then Abduz, Mel?
I know.
This is my last comment. Maybe I'm not too much good about math. My feeling, as far as Heather, they're about two sixty, two seventy-five, twenty years. Five million, four hundred thousand dollars, it would be a lot of interest. And you pay the four point three million dollars, that's total cost. That's nine point something million, so...
I apologize, but I do not...
Maybe I understand, I'm understanding wrong. I asked you a question, yearly, how much interest you pay? That question was a, I asked you...
How much interest?
Yes, two point, yes, two hundred, six thousand dollars. You tell me two seventy yearly. Am I right? Am I right?
The debt service, the two bonds that the council approved.
I don't want to just keep those. I'm just keeping them.
I'm not sure I can tell you exactly, but I can, I can come close in that by financing the police and courts building, by the two bonds that the council approved, the total amount financed was 4.3 million. I believe, and I will confirm this, but roughly, the payments at the end of the day are going to be approximately 6.5 million, which means the interest over 26 versus 20, no, I'm sorry, 24 versus 26 years, I'm not sure. The bonds have slightly different periods of time because of the usability of the building. So you're looking at approximately 2.2, 2.3 million dollars in interest over 25, 27 years.
This could be maybe right, but it's coming down, I understand. But as far as 265, you tell me 260, I do the 20, 20, yes, $5,400,000 plus 4.3 million, that's so simple. It's when it comes down, it'll be interest come down, I understand. Maybe 7 to 8 million dollars, this project will be happening. Thank you.
Now, if the project is completed with the bonds in hand, at the end of the day, over a 20, I'm sorry, over.
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna say 30-year period because it's a rounding error and I can't remember off the top of my head. It will cost the city approximately 6.5 million dollars, including the interest financing costs.
Henry.
And that's of course without selling our two properties and putting a bite into that debt service. Which would make that interest significantly different over time.
If, if. If selling.
If, yes, of course, if.
If selling, if.
If, well, I'm pretty sure we could sell a building on Warren Street. I think the market is in our favor.
Okay. Joe?
Folks have any more questions on any of the other change orders?
I do. One more about the roof. If it's a 25-year roof, is that what it is? Or is it a 30-year roof? Whatever. Is that, is that a 25-year roof that needs like some sort of ceiling or treatment throughout the lifetime, like a 15-year?
No, it's a 15-year. Probably not with it.
But the warranty is, actual lifespan is, what you're looking at now, what's there? That's been up for 4 years or more, 50.
It's not clear to me, other than the inconvenience, whether a roof put on three years from now after you have leak problems would cost more than putting on a roof now. In other words, is there a penalty cost for doing it after the building's all done?
Yes, because we're in a prevailing wage situation, municipal project under the Wicks law. So, the cost of everything that's done in that building now is higher, let's say, than it would be if you did it outside of the prevailing wage laws.
So maybe cheaper the way.
That's the word, yeah, cheaper.
An inferior roof could wreck damage, big damage within a structure, so yeah.
That roof is gonna leak by, you're gonna see a small brown spot somewhere in the ceiling someday and it's gonna start to leak.
And the cost of the potential damage of that, if the roof does start leaking within the next five years.
Couple hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Oh, you're pretty good on that five years. So, we have, we cannot predict two years, right?
Okay. Anything else?
The other questions on any of the other change orders?
Anything else on the change orders?
Garage access or?
If it's garage. The money, I might have to say.
This is garage access.
I have to explain that.
$200,900.
The existing footprint of the building had a section in the rear of the building, there used to be an old loading dock, was outside the building, not part of the original foundation, there was dirt underneath it, it was a wooden loading dock. When that was removed, the building was squared off and an extension built in the back. That area was designated as the two garage, two garage spaces for the police department. That existing space is the existing space we had. A minimum garage is somewhere around 19 to 20 feet. This was 19 foot something. Without removing an existing foundation causing more expense in the design, it was determined that that would be adequate enough room to park a police car. It is adequate enough room to park a police car with no room to get around the car with a, say, a prisoner. So, the chief decided that it was a safety issue and it was not usable. So proposal, the general constructor was asked to develop a price to extend the garage internally, and there is a loading dock, that we could make it four and a half feet bigger, which would solve the safety problem, and that's the number you have in front of you. There's an additional change order from SRW, which is the design firm, to actually do the design in order to accomplish the work, and that's $2,500. And you will be receiving that at some point. So, that would be the total cost, somewhere around $18,000 for the enlarged garage.
Anything else? Any other questions?
No?
Bill?
Actually, I was gonna fight it, but I've decided, I'll shut my mouth. On this particular project, there were a lot of us that was not in favor of the project, be it in one or the process. But the police station is here. I mean, you go up there and you look, it's being constructed. And I can tell you, I've been a part of several projects. And I don't believe we want to get into building this project and not putting a new roof on there if we could do it now. If you have to come back years later, you could be susceptible to water damage, I could be, I could assure you, OCA is not gonna be accommodating to something that you can address right now. It's just a much, it may cost you a little bit more, but it's a much easier process. You guys can all make your comments about how you were displeased with the process or how you weren't happy with the way the building is, has gone along as far as financially. But to not move to put this roof on, I think, and personally myself, would be a mistake. I think you should do it now.
Thank you. Joe?
If I understand it, we don't need it right now. If we do it now, we do it at prevailing wage. If we do it down the road after we identify some leaks, which are relatively easy to do, or if we decide prophylactically down the road to do it, we do it at a lower cost. At the same time, we need a generator that can at least run the police department, its full footprint, and we need a garage that will allow the members of the police department to manage prisoners and so everybody's safe. I say no to the roof, yes to the garage for now.
Anything else? Don?
Just one technical point. I think that Heather mentioned that there is, that there might be some funds left over from the bond if all goes well. But indeed, if you think you're going to do the roof for not prevailing wage from those fundings, that's in, from those available funds, that's incorrect. Those funds would still, any project carried out, under the funds that are issued from the bond, would have to be prevailing wage. And I have to say, as a Democrat, I like paying prevailing wage.
Thank you.
Why pay that? It's not our money, it's the people's money.
Motion to vote, motion to vote. Anything else?
Don, can't you use that money for debt service?
Yes.
So that, just use it for debt service and all 300 grand goes away, no problem. I appreciate your point about paying the prevailing wage, but.
I just wanted to make sure that people knew you couldn't just take the money from that for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just want to give you my recommendation on the roof. If you have the money, you should put the roof on now.
If we have the money, we should put it on now.
Yeah. But we don't know if we have the money, Joe. That's the reality.
Even with that story, you need to put a roof on. Saying if you have the money, you should replace it now.
That's the most possible.
That's my recommendation.
Yes, we should do everything.
Yeah.
But the reality is, so we have $200,000 contingency, of which right now, I'm looking at $154,000 of it being chewed through. Haven't put up one piece of tape as far as I can tell. There hasn't been one lick of paint put up yet, there hasn't been one piece of finished carpentry done yet. That's where we're gonna spend a lot of money on the finish in that space. And we have, we're gonna end up with nothing left.
Well, I mean, you understand the process, there's no, there's no change order that has to do with existing conditions of a building to build the bench for the judge because it's in the contract and there's no change orders.
I understand.
Nor paint, nor drywall, or anything.
Right, they bring in the bench and there's a three-inch gap between the wall and the bench because some, who knows what. Look, I got $12,000, $15,000 in garage changes to make what, a half foot deeper? You know, how much is a good?
4 feet.
Ooh, 4 feet. So that's at, that's 37.5 a foot. That's a lot for a foot, linear foot. I understand, I mean, we're doing a project now, you want to do your wiring when the walls are open, but we don't have unlimited funds. We don't know how much is.
Right, that's why I try to explain in detail all the options and opportunities at this point, any existing conditions, so you can make a smart decision without just saying you need to put a roof on it and let's spend the money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You still feel good about the contingency left over after 153? Joe?
Excuse me?
Still feel all right? 153?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next month we'll be coming.
For what? We'll get another roof, maybe we'll put a deck on. We go get a home.
Yeah, we have to be in a back tap this evening. That's all right.
All right, okay, all this is necessary. Okay, so, resolution number 10, authorizing installation of new roof on a Hudson Police Courts project at 701 Union Street. May I have an introduction in a second? Mike? Henry? Roll call vote.
President Destefana.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Doesn't need a roof right now. No.
Friedman.
Can I go last? Do I have to go now? Why do I have to go now?
Because your name's Friedman.
Come on, yeah. All right, this is what I gotta say. I'm gonna listen to the experts because I say that's what we should usually do. Joe says we got enough, okay, but if we see something like this again, I don't even want to hear from anybody anymore. I'll go yes.
Torrega.
No.
Heather.
I'm gonna defer to Joe's judgment and the treasurer's management of our purse. And with the experience I've had in building, that this can get done for what we have in front of us and still put on something new that we had not foreseen. So I vote yes.
I vote yes. I vote that all of these things on the last ten doors are mostly awesome.
Mia?
I say no, because I'm the same, I don't like that, that's too much money. This city, I told you the one month ago, that we need all of those. That time I was like, no, we don't need it. So then, we're coming. So, I say no.
Moore? Yes. O'era?
Yes.
Rector?
Quick personal experience, three years ago, I was told I did not need a new roof on my own. Six months later, a flood through the house, $25,000 later, I wished I had put that new roof on. So I go yes.
Scolera?
Ah, yes.
I can't even cut your tongue out of this way to vote. Did it pass or not?
Yes.
It passed?
Yes.
Yeah, we're kidding.
Bills are on your desk. We have a motion in a second to waive the bills. Rick? Alexis?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just out of curiosity, can you ask a couple of questions about some of these bills? Rodenhausen and Shell LLP, that's a new one, I assume that's a spinoff of Rockport Myers. But why are we paying them 7500 on? She's free.
Yes, Andrew, please. Rodenhausen and Shell is indeed an offshoot of Rockport Myers. Chris Shaw left and started her own firm with Rodenhausen. They are the bond counsel for the second issuance of the municipal bonds.
Okay. Suzanne Bellinger?
She is, well, she was, and I guess she's filling in as reporting secretary for.
One of the.
One of the.
Wait.
One of the.
CBA.
Yeah, one of those.
One of the.
And Easter?
She has a copy machine. Easter has a copy machine.
How many copy machines you got here? Two payments to Rico, two payments to Easter, not a copy machine? Christina Lessin. I know, it's a real, it's really boring talking about these bills, but you know, everybody's just paying it and nobody's asking any questions.
You already paid it.
Why are we paying it for? What's Christina Lessin?
Secretary of Regulatory Preservation Commission. She gets $30 a meeting.
There's a lot of secretaries around here.
We need that, we're better.
Every regulatory commission has a $700 budget.
Any other questions on the bills? No. Roll call vote.
President Destefana.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
No.
Torrega?
I'm sorry. Heather?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'era?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Scolera?
I'm not even kidding. Propose local law introductory number three of 2016, mending the boundaries of the wards of the city of Hudson and voting procedure for its coming council. May I have a motion in a second to lay the proposed law on the president's desk? Mike? John? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Roll call vote.
President Destefana.
No. Oh, wait, I have a comment to make first before I say no. While I appreciate the work that was done to bring this proposal for the boundary changes here to the council, I also feel that the process was not open enough or transparent. The public and the public officials were completely left out of the decision-making of the.
That's not true.
Of changing these ward boundaries.
That's not true. I was there and there was another elected official there.
Okay, well, I didn't, I didn't know that. I didn't know who the complete committee was. So I, all right, I checked that. I'm not opposed into looking to, at alternatives to the current voting process, but I do believe that we need to make that process fair and equal. I think this council should discuss alternatives to the fair and equal proposal and bring them back for discussion and open participation. And therefore, that's why I vote no.
Donahue?
I've been at the alderman for the last 23 years, representing the fifth ward, and I'm not about to vote to break up the fifth ward, no.
Friedman.
Two years ago, in earnest, the legal committee sat down, three members of the legal committee, with the assistance of the then common council president, crafted a proposal whereby executive and legislative branches would each propose a committee of people, non-elected officials, who would be immune from removal except for cause in order to come up with a plan and hold a series of public hearings to come up with a, a, a pathway for the city to emerge from this ridiculous weighted voting system used in exactly one municipality in the United States. That was considered to be too complicated for many members of the council at the time. So the con, so the legal committee went back and spent about three and a half months, four months, coming up with a forty-five page, a forty-five word question, which asked simply, should we do away with the weighted vote or not? That passed the committee, it came to the council, it passed out of the council, it went to the then mayor's office. He didn't know how to sign legislation and he knew how to veto it, so that's all he could do. So we vetoed it and it came back where most of the members of this body didn't have the courage of their own convictions. And because they could make all kinds of happy noises like, I think this is something that should be studied, but it's really too much of a question to ask now. We should ask it later. So here we are later, and we're asking the question. And you know what I hear? The same nonsense. Anybody, anybody, under the New York State Constitution and Municipal Home Rule Law can get together with somebody else, two people, the by themselves, or with a pet, and they can put together a petition for the red dress of wrongs and present it to the government. That's a First Amendment right. A group of your neighbors got together under their own steam. They used their efforts, their money, their time. They worked cooperatively to come up with a idea. Now, six months ago, when you took that chair, you said something about doing something like that. You've done exactly nothing towards...
I know, and I, and I admit that.
Yes. And, and, and so your neighbors got bored and tired and don't like being screwed. And so we have come to you with a petition for the red dress of a wrong. Now, we can flap our gums here all day. I don't care. We just voted to table it, not vote on it, table it. That's what we're voting on, not voting on it. Let's get that straight. The motion is to not vote on the petition. It really, frankly, doesn't matter what we do. We are emasculated in this sense. It doesn't matter what this body wants. The people of the city have already spoken. The fair and equal petition has more than, more than enough signatures to override this council. So, gnash your teeth, bite your nails, sharpen your pencils, charge your calculators. Really doesn't matter. The voters are about to be at the receiving end of a very well-thought-out educational program. And they're going to learn about how the Fifth Ward refuses to negotiate with the rest of this council. And they're going to learn that this council cannot control them. This will be on the ballot in November, whether anybody likes it or not, because the people in the city, in the Fifth Ward and the Third Ward, the Second Ward and the Fourth Ward, and the First Ward too. So, second. All the wards, in, in numbers way in excess of what are required under the Municipal Home Rule Law, have signed the petition. So gnash your teeth all you want, make all the noises you like. It's over. The weighted vote is over in this town. One way or another, it's over.
And how is it?
Record it any way you like. It's irrelevant. The city council, I know, record it any way you like, whatever you like, Frasier.
Name of the clarification?
No.
The motion is to lay it on the alderman's desk.
Correct. Yes. It's opposition, so we have to go to a roll call vote.
This is something that's come up. It's never actually been a controversy before, but I'm, I'm gonna have to look into this. But I'm not sure that there's any, I'm not, I'm not saying there isn't. I'm not sure there's any basis either who has that vote. As an alderman, a legislator, having the right to, to deliver legislation for consideration by the body, I think that that's a prerogative that each member has. And that laying it on the desk is a matter of fact, that when you put it in front of your, your co-alderman, that, that in the fact, when it is actually presented, then it is laid on the table and it doesn't need to be acknowledged or voted on as laid on the table, that it is in fact, and therefore can be considered. It's, it's peculiar that I've seen it come up here, but since everything unanimously is always laid, I have not really looked into it. But it's an oddity that, I'm not sure where it came from. There may be other literature. I'll have to look in. I mean, I, there may be a basis for it, but it struck me as odd that everybody has always consented to it, so what hasn't been a controversy. But I'm not sure that there is, it may not be a basis for stopping an introduced bill from getting in front of the co-aldermen, which is what this vote is actually about right now. So I'm just gonna have to look into that.
I'm worried.
Friedman.
Sure.
Gariga.
Um, you know, I agree with what everyone has, has said. And at the end of it all, it is up to the voters to decide. And for me, as a Second Ward alderman, and bringing it to the attention of my constituents that live along the lines that have been changed, eliminating Mill Street and Robinson Street out of the Second Ward, and my constituents want to remain the same in the Second Ward, and I feel like it should be changed. So I vote no. But at the end of the day, it's for the voters to decide.
Haddad.
Uh, like one-third John, probably one-quarter Claudia, and maybe one-quarter of what Mr. Cross was referencing last week are my agreements. I vote yes. Gonna make that concise.
Um, I, I totally agree with what President said. I agree that the boundaries need to be addressed and separate from the weighted vote issue. I don't have a problem with the weighted vote, but the way our boundaries were separated, it just doesn't seem like everyone was at the table. I know it was a thought-out process, but if we could just review a few of the sections of it, I think it would be a good idea. But as of right now, I start to think.
Thanks.
But...
Yeah.
Me?
You.
Then you.
Yeah, I told you the last two, you know. So, I, again, I told you that, weighted vote, one man, one vote. I don't have a real issue. I don't, I don't care. I'm concerned about every, all of it, with this anyway. But, we left with the boundary and now. Boundary and now. There will be limit, the poor people, minority people, this boundary, and the poor Eber for the city, the boys. I can, we are not, I'm, I'm, I don't care. But, you have to keep, come up the, come up the better boundary, better people sit down, council should sit down, like that, making a boundary. And one man, one vote, I don't have a boundary. I'm, I'm go for. But, until the boundary fixed, I say no. Have to.
Um, I vote for the one-person one vote. The boundaries also, I'm very concerned about. I've lived there 39 years. These people have lived in the Fifth Ward that have put me in this position, are not happy about the boundaries either. And so I'm going to say no also, that it should be reconstructed.
O'Carra.
I say yes to the placement of this bill on our desks.
Rector.
I say yes. Let the people decide. I think this is taking a little bit of the leadership. No one's going to be happy. Not everyone's going to be happy, but I think the council should take the leadership role.
So you ask the people.
Yeah.
I think I can be all, quite as simple as I have a lot of issues, changing political and boundaries, that's been a constant topic of discussion. I respect what the she was with, we don't necessarily agree with where they landed, so.
I want you to return.
I second. I have five hundred fifty mays, 1,383 abstained, ninety-five.
And so the weighted vote perpetuates itself. Shocking. Can we go home now and stop wasting everybody's time?
Five hundred fifty ayes, 1,383 mays, ninety-five abstained. I have one for less than.
Pardon me?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Aye.
Oh, we have something else?
Well, is it like to test that somehow first and then introduce yourselves?
No, we're not, we're not.
How long will it show?
Gentlemen, pardon me.
I have one for less than.
I, I still don't, I still don't.
No, it's for good. They won't. And what you listen to, the number of all the other ways, the answers.
Oh, you mean if it were one person, one vote?
No, it's a thing, but it didn't really hit them, man.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. They're gonna take us to the voters.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but it wasn't even a point at which it mattered.
But yeah, that's fine.
I mean, the procedure didn't fall for a vote at that point. No.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Council President, for having me present tonight. My name is Javier Barrios. I'm with my colleague Gary Fogelman. We, we come from a company called Good Energy. Good Energy is an energy aggregator and consultant. Where our headquarters are in New York City. And we have been around for about 16 years. I've been with the company for about the same number of years. I'm one of the founding partners. My colleague is Mass Markets Manager. We've been working together for close to a decade. And, and so I'm excited to, I know it's been a long evening, so I'm gonna try to talk to you a little bit about this comprehensive energy program as quickly as I can. But it is very interesting because New York became the seventh state in the country to adopt this type of program. And I know that one of the, the main topics is expenses, as I've, I've heard throughout the evening, the theme, obviously budgets are important at the municipal level. So the nice thing is to bring a program that could really offer benefits, not only to the municipality, but to the residents. And this is a program that offers money back to residents, as opposed to imposing taxes or increasing taxes. This is something called community choice aggregation. Again, only seven states in the country do this. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the governor's program that was issued by the Public Service Commission called REV, Reforming the Energy Vision. And that program essentially is really helping, you know, fortify, fortify and, and bring resilience to the grid, right? The, the way we transport power. And so this program started out as a demonstration program about a year ago. It was a demonstration program that, that really helped municipal government be empowered to provide this type of service to residential customers. Okay? So if you look at the, the PowerPoint presentation on the second slide, it talks about trends in municipal buying cooperatives or buying programs. And so those trends, we all know, you know, you might be in a buying pool, you might aggregate your buildings. You know, there's affinity groups like churches, chambers of commerce that aggregate, you know, commercial accounts for electricity and for natural gas. And we've been doing that for years. So what has been trending around the state is community choice aggregation, which basically aggregates not your facilities. You guys are already on a ESCO contract with an alternative provider, saving money over the tariff, I'm assuming. But this actually aggregates all your residents. So all your residents are aggregated. So before, you couldn't do this. There was only a pilot program out of Westchester about a year ago, that Good Energy, our company, was a lead consultant on. And so if you, if you look at page four, there's a Wall Street Journal article talking and speaking about sustainable Westchester, which...
Can we, can we just stipulate that everything that's in your packet says you're great? Cut to the chase.
Absolutely. But it is, we are talking about the program. So the pilot program is something that we've done for New York State. And so essentially, what it does is, New York is allowing municipalities to pass a local law. So you'd vote on a local law, which allows you to aggregate all the homes in your region. Okay? And we've been talking with Green County, your, your, your sister county. We've been all over the, New York, Erie County, Anadaga, obviously the downstate area, Orange County. And so what we're trying to do is aggregate not only your residential homes, but also communities in the surrounding area. We've done this in the Midwest. We've done this in New Jersey. And we actually have an aggregated buying pool that consists of close to 2 million people in population, about close to 700,000 households. So we want to do the same thing here in New York. And not that we're great or anything like that. It's not about, you know, you know, saying that we're great. It's really, what I'm, what I'm trying to convey is experience. It's something that we've done, you know, hundreds and hundreds of times. We renewed these programs. We've been doing it for close to five years. So it's something that municipalities really understand can empower, you know, or at least empower, you know, your, your residents or give choice to your residents. Right now, what you have is you have a default rate with utility, National Grid and NIC. Those are the two utilities in Columbia County area. So everybody's on a default rate. So what this does, it gives you another option. Right now, people can shop on their own, right, and choose an alternative provider or an ESCO. They can stay with the utility. Or if you guys pass the local law and actually allow this to happen, there could be a municipally endorsed power or electricity or natural gas rate offered to your residents, which is vetted by the Public Service Commission. You have to have an implementation plan that's set. You have to have a community outreach of two months. You also have to make sure that everybody gets a notice in the mail. And so the way this all works out is through an opt-out program. So people are automatically in it and... We've done this in the Midwest, we've done this in New Jersey, and we actually have an aggregated buying pool that consists of close to 2 million people in population, about close to 700,000 households. So we want to do the same thing here in New York. And not that we're great or anything like that, it's not about, you know, saying that we're great, it's really, what I'm trying to convey is experience. It's something that we've done, you know, hundreds and hundreds of times. We renewed these programs, we've been doing it for close to five years. So it's something that municipalities really understand can empower, you know, or at least empower, you know, your residents or give choice to your residents. Right now, what you have is you have a default rate with utility, National Grid and NICEG. Those are the two utilities in the Coenby County area. So everybody's on a default rate. So what this does, it gives you another option. Right now, people can shop on their own, right, and choose an alternative provider or an ESCO. They can stay with the utility, or if you guys pass the local law and actually allow this to happen, there could be a municipally endorsed power or electricity or natural gas rate offered to your residents, which is vetted by the Public Service Commission. You have to have an implementation plan that's set, you have to have a community outreach of two months, you also have to make sure that everybody gets a notice in the mail. And so the way this all works out is through an opt-out program. So people are automatically in it, and they can choose to opt out whenever they want. So once they get the letters and they choose that, or, you know, they say they want to choose an alternative provider, or they want to stay on with the utility, they can opt out, send the letter back, and then they're out of the program.
So it's negative marketing? People have to take an.
It's an opt-out.
They have to do something to not do business with you.
They have to take action, right.
Why's that now?
Because the issue with aggregations is if it's the opposite effect, an opt-in, you don't get the economies of scale, you don't get the aggregated numbers.
Why's that?
Because in most cases, when you market in an opt-in program, statistically, only about 1% to 2% really opt into a program. So what you need to have is a mass scale of customers to actually make this work. Because one individual customer really doesn't have the ability to command a good price. But if you aggregate the pool, now it becomes a large financial transaction.
But your aggregation requires a negative marketing aspect. I mean, it's illegal in most industries to use negative marketing.
Well, it's, the order was passed on April 20th, so it's an administrative rule by the Public Service Commission, so it's legal in the state to do it, and you're empowered to do it. And in most cases, if you look at other cities and villages, they're actually, they have actually created a municipal buying program, or have actually registered themselves as a municipal utility. So if you have any water utilities or any water billing, it's the same situation in the sense that you're creating an energy program or energy utility for yourself. So it's a pseudo-municipal utility is what you're creating. It's becoming more transactionable for the municipality to do this, you don't have to put in the generation plans, you don't have to put the steel in the ground, you actually could do it through a financial transaction. And that's how it's set up. Bottom line, it creates savings. In Illinois, when we started this, you know, very few cities actually did this, probably about 10% when this started off. And by the end of really a successful program, and the trending in the state, probably about 90% of municipalities in Illinois actually are doing this program. So there's a ton of case studies, we have a ton of references from municipal government. We actually, our aggregation pulls in about 300 municipal governments. So certainly, we can provide those case studies to you.
What's your average savings?
The average savings in the Midwest was anywhere between $100 and $300.
What's your average savings?
So the average savings, right now, it's more of an exploratory thing, we're thinking we could see somewhere around $100 to $150 per year.
And you guarantee that savings?
We guarantee it over the previous 12 months. So we have to have the data. Because the interesting thing about New York that people don't know is that the tariff rate is a variable rate. In most states, the tariff rate is fixed for a set term. Here, in New York, and if you look at page seven, you see the variability of the rates. And so in 2014, we saw the rates go as high as 19 cents in NICEG, and as high as 16 cents per kilowatt hour in National Grid. So there is volatility. So nobody's, you know, watching over you, and there's no expert saying, hey, switch your rates or go to a competitive supplier. What this program does is allows you to have the expertise to really hedge properly, look at the financial markets, look at the energy markets, and really understand how to create budget certainty.
With all due respect, this is the exact same pitch that this exact same body heard about two and a half years ago, and today we're paying about $15,000 a month more than we were with.
On your municipal.
Yeah.
Well, this is a different program. This has nothing to do with, this is for.
This doesn't just screw the city, it screws everybody. I mean, how's it any different? How's it any different? You're making, you guess maybe we'll have some savings. I asked you if you guarantee it, and you said yes, but then you.
Over the previous 12 months.
Yes or no? You going to guarantee the savings or not?
If I have the data, and I can guarantee the savings compared to the previous 12 months, because it is a variable rate.
Yeah, however you pay that. So the answer is no, you can't guarantee, you could cost us more money. You could cost me at my house more money than I'm paying now. Yeah?
Yeah, but the utility also is a variable rate, so you don't know where that's going. Your rate screened up to 19 cents, and nobody told you you could have hedged, you know, six months before and saved a lot of money.
I don't disagree that New York State is a terrible place to live and do business. Unfortunately, here we are. But, I mean, how do you save us money? You don't. Maybe you could, but there's no guarantee. And if you cost us more, there's no guarantee, we just have to pay more. How do we know that what you're doing is going to be better than what the last company that came in here and said they were going to save us money?
Right. So let me be clear that that company is doing municipal facilities. Your municipal facilities are a lot smaller than the large financial transaction that is all your residents plus the surrounding communities. So there's a different transaction that goes there. Secondly, the Public Service Commission is going to be vetting the program. We have to, you know, obviously, display the savings, demonstrate the savings, provide an implementation plan, provide the public outreach. Secondly, anybody can opt out whenever they want. They don't have to stay in the program. If you're on with an ESCO, a third-party ESCO, there are 100, 200, $300 exit fees that you're charged. With this program, you don't have an exit fee. So if you don't like it, you could leave it at any time. Secondly, could also come back to it at any time. It's offering you an option, a third option. It doesn't guarantee that you're going to pay high, if it doesn't work, you can certainly go back to the utility whenever you want. And that's why the Public Service Commission likes it, and it's part of the Reforming the Energy Vision Plan. They wouldn't have condoned this program or put it out there if they didn't think it was a viable program in other states.
That's what they said when they created the ISO, and electric rates in New York State have gone up hundreds of percent since the ISO went into operation and they deregulated electric.
But this is another option to combat the way the ISO, that's my point. The ISO is putting you guys on a variable tariff rate. And this provides a fixed budget certain rate that you can compare to the ISO's day ahead or real-time mark, whatever the tariff rates are, and you can say, hey, the municipal rate is better at this time than the going variable rate. It's another option. It's empowering you guys to have another option, not to take away what you're doing by saying, oh, you know, you're going to screw me, you're going to mess us up. No, you're not allowing that option to be there. And that's what the Public Service Commission is doing, is giving you another option. And it's worked in the past.
How often does your rate fluctuate?
Our rates do not fluctuate. Once we fix a rate, and we decide, it could be a year, it could be two years, it could be three years, depending on what the best rate and the best term is at the moment.
I mean, with all the freedom and making a lot of great points, listening to you, it sounds like a great idea, but to have the, have people locked in and to opt out makes people very cautious. And then you have other people that aren't as technical as we are. So let me do it on a basis, I'm the average customer, right? And I get this letter in the mail, and it tells me that I am now in this program. From that point forward, what can I expect from you as far as service, price, and outcome?
Okay, that's an excellent question. The beauty of the program is that your billing, there's two components in your billing. There's your delivery charges, and there's your supply charges. What fluctuates every month is your supply charges. Okay? That's your, the market forces, the weather, that's what manipulates your prices every month, and it changes every month, depending on what your rate class is. Then you have your delivery charges. Your delivery charges include customer service from NICEG or from National Grid, it includes the local service, which is if I need to cut any tree limbs, or if there's any blackouts or brownouts, that's a service provided by the utility. That doesn't change, and the billing doesn't change. The only thing that changes is your rate, if we move forward, if and when we move forward, your rate changes on your supply portion. But your bill, your 800 number service to any issues with regard to your home, does not change at all. That's still the same. And you get an opt-out letter in the mail, you can either opt out, or down the road, you can get out of the program whenever you want. So it gives you that ability to move if it doesn't make sense for you.
If you're a customer and you've already chosen a different supplier.
Right.
How does your proposal affect them?
You are automatically sifted out of the opt-out list, so you wouldn't be part of it, you would be opted out automatically. So if you're on with an ESCO, right, so if you're on with ESCO, or the municipal facilities are on with ESCO, they would not be part of this at all. Yes?
I don't know how it works. I have a business, I tell you that, I did the same thing, but it's not a one, it's back one. I pay more money.
Right.
Why? I pay more money. I have a central hustle, they supply everything, gas, everything. So when I choose another company, so central hustle charged me money, and they are charging me money, I combine together, I pay even more money. So then I call them, okay, what's going on? I change it, everything, but first two months is, look like it's down. Three months down, four months, it's great, great, great. Oh, this change, you know, then I put it back, everything central hustle, it's come down my way. I don't think so, it's not a one. Well, my best experience.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why the Public Service Commission wants to do these things, is to bring awareness. There's a two-month outreach campaign. Secondly, a lot of ESCOs have deceptive marketing practices that are not being over, that's no oversight by the Public Service Commission. You get a teaser rate, you get a credit card in the mail, you know, one of those gift cards in the mail, you switch, you think you're going to get a better rate, and all of a sudden, the teaser rate goes away, and your rates go through the roof, because it's a variable rate. In this case, this is something that's watched closely, and it's a fixed rate. So you know exactly what you're paying, you know what it's going to be in the next 12 months or 24 months, whatever the term is, so that you can make an apples-to-apples comparison with what the tariff rate is, or what your competitive rates are. What you don't have is the fixed rate, and that's exactly what we're trying to solve or resolve in the market. The outreach program and what's the information that's out there is going to make the consumer more educated, essentially.
All right. I think we have enough to read and process. And we'll see how this council works.
Thank you. Good questions, spirited questions, I appreciate it. Thank you for having us.
Any other business? Do you have another resolution or no? No, we don't, right. Before we, the chair, please make sure that you've signed the resolutions. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Henry, thank you. Who was the second? So, thank you.